Welcome, everyone and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals to the City of Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals for the agenda hearing evening of October 27, 2020, it being 7:00 PM, our published start time. We're going to jump right on into our meeting agenda. For those of you in attendance that are listening in that have not been to a public hearing via Zoom before, I'll just run quickly through the sequence of how things take place in a moment. But before we begin, we essentially run through the Zoom agenda just like we would in person, except not being in person. We do it all via Zoom, starting at the beginning of our agenda with a roll call. We then go into the business meeting where we will hear, review, and approve the minutes from our previous meeting, which was October 13. Then we will move into the public hearing section. The public hearing section is when we actually hear applications that are either continued or applications that are brand new coming before the ZBA. Before we begin and go any further, I'll just take a moment to take a roll call and then introduce the board, and we'll jump right into the business meeting so that we can get to the first of the first set of public hearings. There are two that we've received requests for continuances and so as to not keep folks, whether they be applicants or representatives or those members of the public that might be here to speak in connection with one of these applications, so as to not keep you waiting around till the end of the hearing or till the sequence. We'll take care of those continuances first before we get into the first substantive hearing. So, beginning with our roll call, I'll go ahead and call your name, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you could just respond in by either saying here or present, and we will establish quorum. Mr. Mark Moore. Seattle. Do we see Mark on the panelists yet? Andy, I don't.
Oh, he's not with us, I believe.
He said he couldn't make it tonight, I recall.
Okay. Very good. So, Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Ms. Rachel Webb.
Here.
Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Bud Chanon.
Here.
And Mr. Brendan Banovic.
Here.
And I'm Rob Chanpetti. I'm here as well. So, in the absence of Mr. Moore, who's our vice chair, Mr. Delisle will serve as chair. Ms. Webb will serve as our secretary, and we will bring into service Mr. Chanon. Bud, you'll, as an associate member, you'll be our voting, our fifth voting member this evening, if that's okay?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Great. And for those observing and listening, we will have five voting members of the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening, and for purposes of this evening's votes, the voting members will be Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb, Mr. Swanton, and Mr. Chanon, as well as myself. So, just taking a moment, I'll introduce the board, and we'll jump right on in. We do have a quorum, by the way. So, calling the, just to introduce the board, we have Mr. Stephen Delisle, who's our secretary, serving as vice chair this evening. Ms. Rachel Webb, who is a member, serving as our secretary this evening. Mr. Ken Swanton, ZBA member. Mr. Bud Chanon, associate member. He'll be our fifth voting member this evening. Mr. Brandon Banovic, associate member. And my name is Rob Chanpetti. I'm the chair. And again, welcome to the ZBA October 27, 7:00 PM hearing. So, going into the first matter of the business meeting, we have the approval of the minutes. Oh, and my apologies, before I go any further, I want to also introduce on this evening is Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. Ms. Gretchen Joy is the keeper of the minutes. And I don't believe Ms. Jennifer Blanchett, our zoning codes commissioner, is here this evening. But those are the, sort of, the names to listen out for if you are, if you're either an applicant or just a member of the public in attendance. So, going in, pardon me, going into the business meeting for this evening, we have the minutes provided to us by Ms. Joy of the meeting of 10/13/2020. Do we have any comments, revisions, or questions? We'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have none of the above, no comments, questions, or corrections.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Webb?
Yes, I do have a few. And I'm looking at the latest version of the revised minutes, which we received today, the redlined ones. So, let's see, page three, in the middle of the second paragraph, the sentence, I think, reads, Ms. Mead responded, "The niece is related by blood, and the intent of the ordinance is to allow family members to provide care for one another and to allow residents to age in place." I think it should be to and not at. It's kind of minor. Scrolling down under item number four, the date there should be the year 2020. I think a zero is missing. And then, in the last line of that first paragraph, I think Planning Office should be uppercase. Then, page four, let's see, this is the one, the fourth paragraph, the last sentence in the fourth paragraph, it's regarding, "For the butter's structure, if only one-third of the attic has adequate headroom to be included in the calculation, the house would still be within point too far FAR requirement." I think you just need to delete the second word "would" there. And then the last page, my last comment, this is, let's see, the last large paragraph, I guess is the best way for me to say this, in the middle, it says, "Ms. Webb commended Mr. Swanton on his research. She said the decision has not been finalized, and the hearing should be reopened." So, I think my comment is about the word finalized, because in fact, we did vote, the ZBA did vote, but I think perhaps a clarification might be that the decision has not been issued to the applicant in writing. Maybe Andy Port might have a different variation on that, but.
Yeah, you might just use the phrase "filed with the city clerk."
There you go. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Webb. So, I, let's see, moving on, Mr. Swanton, any comments or revisions or comments regarding Ms. Webb's changes?
No, I think Gretchen Joy did a nice job of capturing the, some of the latest changes, some of which I suggested, and I like Ms. Webb's changes as well. So, I'm very comfortable with where we are now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chanon?
No additional comments. Excellent work by the team making the edits. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chanon. Mr. Banovic?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I, too, have nothing to add, and certainly no problems with, by my count, I've got four modifications by Ms. Webb. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes with the four changes raised by Ms. Webb?
I move we approve them as amended. Does Ken Swanton?
I'll second that, Stephen Delisle.
Okay. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Delisle. This is the motion to approve the minutes with the modifications. Mr. Moore, sorry, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chanon?
Yes.
Mr. Banovic?
Yes.
Rob Chanpetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. The minutes with the modifications have been approved. Thank you very much, members of the board. We will push this Section 2B in the business meeting, discussion of public comment emails to board members. We'll put that to the end of our public hearing so that we don't, it still remains part of the public, the public hearing, and is certainly going to be available for anyone to participate in and hear and listen to. But we, in the spirit of just moving things along, we won't, we won't belabor that before we get into the substantive applications that are before the board. So, with that, moving to the public hearings, we have two matters that have, we, the board has received a request for further continuance. The first of the two is the matter by Winward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC, on the application at 68 Middle Street. We have, we have a request by Attorney Mead to continue the matter. Our next available meeting would be December 8. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard on this, or may we proceed on the request?
No, December 8 would be great, since we need to advertise another permit request as part of this. So, December 8 would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Members of the ZBA, having heard from Attorney Mead as the reasons why the request is needed, do any members have any comments? And in the absence of that, do we have a motion to approve the request for continuance to the meeting of December 8?
This is Rachel Webb. I'll make a motion to continue this application, number 2020-05368 Middle Street, to the ZBA meeting of December 8.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Stephen Delisle.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Delisle on the continuance to the meeting of December 8. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chanon?
Yes.
Rob Chanpetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application on 68 Middle is continued to December 8. Thank you very much. The next matter that is, we've received a request to continue on is the matter, the application of Dan Granavec, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC, for the application at 758th Street, special permit for nonconformities. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard?
I do. Thank you. Yes, we would like a continuance to the November 10 meeting, if it's possible. The applicant has been waiting a while, but we are requesting a continuance. And as I'm sure the board can appreciate, the zoning code enforcement officer came out today, issued an opinion relative to the definition of FAR on Plum Island, and we are taking the time to make sure that everything that we have submitted in our application is consistent with that definition. So, there are no issues with that. So, we would appreciate the board's indulgence and continue this to the November 10 meeting, please.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Members of the ZBA, having heard from Attorney Mead on behalf of the applicant, requesting a continuance to the meeting of 1110, that's November 10, on 758th Street. Do any members of the board have any comments or clarifications? And in the absence of that, do we have a motion to approve the request to continue this to the meeting of November 10?
I'll make a motion, it's Rachel Webb, to continue the application 2020-074758th Street, to the ZBA meeting of November 10.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Very good. Thank you. Motion is made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chanon?
Yes.
Rob Chanpetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application for 758th Street is continued to the meeting of November 10. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Thank you, members of the board, on moving through that. That brings us, ladies and gentlemen, to the first substantive public hearing. I'll read the public notice in just a moment, but for those that have just either logged on or have not attended a Zoom public hearing before, I'll just walk everyone through a quick overview of how the, these meetings go and, and the sequence of what we do, and then we'll jump right on in. So, in all public hearings, I will begin by reading a description of the application, the applicant's name, as well as the address, as well as the relief being sought, described as either a variance, dimensional variance, a special permit, special permit for nonconformities, whatever the application which has been public in the public, published in public notice is, we will read that, as well as the descriptor, which is the, the describing language as to what the applicant seeks to do. After we read the public notice, we will invite the applicant or the applicant's representative, attorney, architect, engineer, whomever, to speak and, to speak on behalf of the application and present the board members the application, the details of it. At the end of that, we will close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to the, to the public comment section. This used to be where we would elicit those who wished to speak and support, those who wished to speak in opposition, but in the interest of just, I guess, simplicity and economy, we, we've decided to just simply allow anyone who wishes to speak to speak, no matter what, you know, position you wish to, to be on, you don't have to pick a side, essentially. You don't have to say, "I'm speaking in favor or in opposition," just simply give us your name, your address, and let us know your thoughts, so that the board can understand what comments or concerns or support you might wish to voice. Keep in mind, we have to keep that section to no more than two minutes per, per public comment, just to provide time for everyone to have a moment to share their thoughts and to speak. Once we get through the, the public comment section, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to the section called Questions from the Board. This is the section of the hearing when members of the ZBA usually adopting and adapting what they heard in the public comment section or from the applicant, or otherwise, will pose questions to the applicant, to the applicant's representative, and it begins the open discussion of questions or clarifications. As, as, once we conclude that section of questions from the board, we close that portion, and we move to deliberations. Deliberations, in a public hearing sense, is essentially when everyone gets to hear the ZBA members, think out loud, essentially. You will hear the deliberations around the legal criteria that must be met, and whether the applicant has met them, or whether there are concerns or questions. Oftentimes, members of the board can pose additional questions, and in such instances, they'll ask members of the, whoever's speaking on behalf of the applicant to maybe clarify a point. This is also when members of the ZBA will, again, carry forward something they may have heard in the public comment portion, a question or a concern for further clarification. Once we finish the deliberations, we close that section of the public hearing, and this is when we will elicit a vote, a motion to approve. In, under Robert's Rules of Order, moving and advancing an application forward has to be done in the form of, of an affirmative motion. That doesn't mean that the person making that motion to approve is, is voting to approve that application, but rather, that's just simply how it gets to the floor, so to speak. Once a motion's made to approve, it is seconded, and once it's made and seconded, that's when we will call the role of the voting members. In order for an application to be successful, there needs to be at least four votes in the affirmative. We have five voting members, and that means four out of the five have to vote yes, in order for the application to prevail. Having concluded all of that, we will jump right into the first application, which is 50 Bayberry Road, Joel and Mary Beth Martins. There are three components to this application. This is docket 2020-056, a dimensional variance to construct an addition for an in-law suite within the required front yard setback. Application 2020-057, special permit to allow an in-law apartment, use number 109, under our zoning code. And finally, application or docket number 2020-062, a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks to construct an addition of over 500 square feet to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure. With that, may we hear from the applicant, and I understand we have Mr. Joel Martins speaking on behalf of this application. Mr. Martins?
Hi, it's actually Mary Beth Martins. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Great. So, like you said, we are first asking for a special permit for an in-law apartment, which then leads us to needing the variance and the special permit for the over 500 square foot increase. So, I'll just go to the first slide and talk first about the in-law apartment special permit. We are asking to add this addition to a pre-existing one-family ranch-style home in the R1 district. We are asking for a 420-square-foot addition to the west side of our house, which is on Turkey Hill Road. We're planning on using 270 square feet of existing structure from our total, for a total of 690-square-foot in-law apartment, consisting of one bedroom, one bathroom, and an open living space with a kitchenette. The in-law apartment is for my parents. My mother has multiple physical disabilities and requires care a little bit more than what my father can handle by himself. So, the addition of the in-law apartment, you know, is a welcomed feature to the neighborhood. We have determined that it will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. We'd only be adding the two people to the neighborhood, so it wouldn't overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, nor have any impact on any other municipal system in the immediate area or in any other area of the greater city of Newport. It won't impair the integrity or character of the district or joining districts, as it will consist of only the stated family members, and it will not be used as any other type of residence or business or house any other family members. We do have letters that we submitted from our neighbors, who are actually very familiar with my parents and are equally excited for them to move into the neighborhood if approved. The placement of the in-law apartment would be on a pre-existing paved pad that is currently being used to house a recreational vehicle. We were approved for this pad and a curb cut in the late summer 2017, early fall, when we had somebody come out and let us know where the appropriate place for the curb cut would be, considering we are on a corner lot. So, because we're looking to add the addition to the Turkey Hill side of the house, we discovered that because it's a corner lot, we actually have two front yards. So, the addition of the in-law will project into the secondary non-primary front yard, which is currently the side of our house. The required front yard setback is 30 feet. The addition planned to occupy, is planned to only occupy the side yard with a setback of 23.6 feet. So, this is an addition, which is 6.4 feet over the setback. The regulatory side setback standards are 20 feet. If this house was not on a corner lot, the addition would have met the side setback requirements. Since our house is considered to have two front yard setbacks, we're requesting that we're allowed the addition based on a regular, single-family home plot in the R1 district, which would have a side yard setback on both sides of the house. Without, you know, the strict application of the ordinance would deprive reasonable use of our lot, as there is sufficient space to build the unit, and if the lot was considered to not have two front yards, the side yard setback requirements would be met. We believe this would also improve the aesthetics of the corner lot, and it's not a unique situation for families. The neighborhood is a family-friendly area where we, multiple generations live together. So, by allowing the variance, it would not grant special privilege. It would simply provide our family the ability to live in a manner where we can support and care for my parents any time of day. In regards to this special permit over 500 square feet, the existing lot is identified as a non-conforming lot in the R1 district, because it is 11,130 square feet, when R1 zoning dictates 20,000 square feet lots. The addition of the in-law suite would occupy 270 square feet of the existing one-family house. It would take over the full master bedroom, the full second bedroom, as well as a portion of the third bedroom would need to be used to include a stairway. So, the second floor is needed to provide the bedrooms for two children and the couple. We're projecting an 864-square-foot addition to the second floor addition. The in-law is projected to be 420 square feet, which gives us an additional, or total additional, of 1284 square feet overall. So, that's where the, over the 500 square feet comes into play. So, as you can see, once, you know, if approved for one, it kind of leads us down the road for the others. We did include some, the survey and some pictures of what the house looks like currently, and you can see where the motor home is on the left side of the house. That's where the addition would be added. We wouldn't need to go past the paved area that's on the side lot, so there would be no additional groundwork or digging up of the ground in that area.
Okay. Was there anything else that you wanted to, that you wanted to add?
I don't think so. I think that covered everything.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And so, we'll move to the next portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support and opposition, or just simply speak, please do so by just clicking on the bottom of your Zoom screen where you have the option to raise your hand. And Andy Port will open your mic, and we will hear from you. We just ask that you give your name and address as well.
And not seeing any hands at this time, Chair.
All right. I see no hands either, going once, going twice. Seeing no hands, we will close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Let's see. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Martin, I think the only question that I have for you, I guess it goes really to sort of those, the in-law special findings. I think that there, there are a number of, of findings here that we need to go through, and I think that your, your presentation was, was very comprehensive and hit most of those. But I think that there were a couple more that you didn't hit. So, if, maybe I'll just run through them, and you can tell me if you hit it, or you, or you, or you didn't already. Is that okay?
Yes.
The, the first one, the use, and this is from Section X, Section 10-H7 of the zoning ordinance. The use is listed in the table of use regulations. I think that that, that's all set. The use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. I think that that's been established. Will not create any undue traffic congestion or impair any pedestrian safety. Could, could you speak to that a little bit with the two curb cuts?
Yep. So, we've had the two curb cut now for about three or four years. We actually, we, actually, the city, well, the neighborhood tends to use it as a bus stop area as well. So, in the winter, we actually shovel out both curb cuts, so that the kids can easily manage the corner while waiting for the, you know, for the bus and to get on there easily. You know, we're not, I know on the survey, the surveyor had added the second driveway in. We didn't discuss with him what the driveway would look like, but we were originally thinking of maybe doing a circular driveway and connecting the two curb cuts, where it would be a little bit easier for my mother to access the front of the house with ease. But we, you know, we've, we've only used the second curb cut to move the motor home in and out of the driveway. You know, being on the corner, we would definitely prefer to have, you know, the circular, so that it's more visible for any turning vehicles onto Bayberry Road. But we've never had any concerns or issues with our own driveway, which is the first driveway on Bayberry.
Okay, I see. And so, that's the second curb cut, or the later established curb cut closest to Turkey Hill Road. That is in existence, as we can see by the picture in the, in your packet.
Yes. And somebody from the Department of Public Works had come out a few years ago to help us and approve it, and he had, he had determined exactly where the cut had to be, based on the appropriate distance from Turkey Hill Road.
Now, just a follow-up question to that, and maybe Andy or Caitlin, you might want to speak to this issue. If the, in, okay, is to have a circular driveway, is that something that would need to be reflected in the plan as presented to the board?
Yes. Sorry, this is Andy Port. I, yes, I think that should be reflected on the plan, if there's going to be a change of that nature. And obviously, the board should, as part of reviewing this application, make a determination as to the proposed new driveway. Obviously, there's a curb cut established there, but as to the driveway location itself.
Yeah. And we're open to suggestions of what, you know, would, you know, make the most sense or be the safest way for us to. make the most sense or be the safest way for us to be able to include a third. We currently have two vehicles, so we would be adding a third with the, with my parents living with us.
Okay, Ms. Martin, let's, let's table that second driveway and the, the shape or the layout of that second driveway for a minute and just finish going through these, these last few points. And then I'll turn you over to, to my fellow committee members. So I think that you, you covered point four. That's fine. Number five, any special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit are fulfilled? I don't think we need to worry about that. The requested use will not impair the integrity and character. I think you talked about that and that, I think we, we hit that one. That's good. The requested use will not buy its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use. I think that's covered. The proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. That's fine. And I think the last one is number nine. The proposed use shall be, shall not be conducted in a manner to admit any, and you covered that in your written materials. So that, so that's all with respect to X, section 10-H7. And I don't have any further questions on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Ms. Webb.
Yes, hi. I do have several questions for the applicant because when I looked at the proposal and the photos and saw that there already is the second driveway curb cut, I looked into that a bit further. And according to the Department of Public Services, they have no record of that approval. They went back in their records to 2008 and they didn't find any approval for that. So I have concerns about that. And then I'm intrigued with the idea of a circular drive because I think in order to do that, you'd have to have the two openings much farther apart to get the right curve. But I'm, I'm no engineer. I mean, you'd leave that to the site planners to work that out. But on a larger or more macro issue for the applicant, I was just curious if there was any consideration to do your addition on the right side of the house, utilizing the family room and the area in front of that so that you would build out to the right side, to the edge of the, the building envelope where you would not be impacting the side yard setback. I think you, you could probably get the same amount of square footage that you need. And then, you know, be converting your three bedrooms on the first floor today to, you know, your family room that you're taking over for the in-law apartment if you were to build it on the right side. I just didn't know if your architect or you may have gone through that thought process or not.
Yeah, I know. We did look into that. And when we went over the plans with the architect, she had explained that if we use, if we moved everything over to the other side of the house, it would impact a lot of the plumbing. And the way we had designed it was that all of the plumbing that is existing would just be built off of. We would then have to replumb. And when we looked at the setbacks and the size of the addition, it felt that it would be very close to our current neighbor and her fence. And we didn't, you know, we felt we didn't want to encroach too much on her personal space when we have, you know, so much space on the other side that's not really used for anything.
Right, but this way you'd be kind of utilizing your existing building footprint and just expanding on that, just to the edge of the side yard setbacks. And then you could just be expanding your existing parking area. So you'd just use the one curb cut. And anyway, it was just a thought process I looked at when I was reviewing this.
Were there any other questions, Ms. Webb?
No.
Okay, then we'll move to Mr. Swanton. Any questions for the applicant?
Hi, yeah, I, I went by here recently and I see along Turkey Hill, you've got some really big trees there and stuff. So I kind of get that from the Bayberry roadside, that's almost like your side yard, but just, it just happens to be your, another front yard because there's a road over there. But the way the trees are laid out, it doesn't feel that way as you're standing in front of your house. So I can understand what you're trying to do. I understand you're, you're in an unusual situation because you really have two front yards. And so, you know, 23 feet or whatever it is, you're a tiny bit in. I guess my question comes back around to this question on the driveway. You know, you had mentioned that it'd be easier for your parents or your mother, I guess, if it was circular and you could pull around there and she could park right there perhaps and then go in and out. And I guess that still leaves you the driveway to back in and out of. But what I don't understand, I'm not sure this is a question for you, but it may be a question for the planning folks here. I don't, what I don't understand is, would a circular driveway be better from the city's perspective? Or is that something that you really can't evaluate without seeing the proposal in front of you? So that's, I guess that's really a question for Candy, for Caitlin or for Andy or someone.
This is Andy. I'll respond back to that. I guess I have two comments I would make in response to that and let me know if you wanted anything further. One is, you know, the aesthetics or the character on the neighborhood, regardless of where it is, whether it's in the historic part of the city or not, are important. So I would hesitate to approve something like a circular driveway that's going to extend essentially more asphalt across the frontage of the property, which is effectively adding or contributing, you know, in one way or another to the streetscape. Also generally, not sure with the origin of this driveway curb cut, but generally speaking, we would suggest avoiding new curb cuts for one lot and trying to use the existing curb cut, you know, both for traffic safety, you know, not having limitations on parking on the street, you know, the aesthetics of the streetscape. So those are just kind of the two general things that come to mind looking at this application and the questions in general.
Thank you, thank you, Andy. That's helpful. I guess, I guess my related question then is, I guess, the proposal that's on the screen here in front of us, the applicant's proposing to have, you know, continue to use their current driveway. And then there's this somewhat mysterious curb cut that certainly exists in the picture, although Ms. Webb had a hard time having the highway department kind of describe when it went in. But it's certainly there. I guess, maybe I'm showing my ignorance here, but does the city allow two driveways for a house like this in an in-law apartment? Or is that something that generally, because, because I didn't see it in the ordinance for in-law apartments, but maybe I'm missing something somewhere. So if someone could, you know, describe what the problem is with what we're looking at here on the slide that's in front of us, as far as, is this the city not want generally to have two curbs, two driveways for one house?
Generally speaking, yes, that's a criteria that we look at. You know, it depends on the neighborhood, what type of issues are coming up, but it's, it's not a lot different, although it's less traffic. Where it's not a lot different than having a property in the downtown and not wanting to have a series of strip of access points along the same frontage. So, you know, for instance, when the planning board got the Tropic Star application for the CVS up on Story Avenue, they wanted to make sure that there was only one curb cut, you know, on either section, for instance, on the Story Avenue section, that there would not be two curb cuts there. So those are consolidated into one between the CVS and the, and the gas station. So again, just in general, we suggest, I mean, there might be a rationale in particular instances like this one, maybe, to have a second curb cut. And there obviously might be a history behind the existing curb cut here. But generally speaking, we would suggest erring on the side of not having more curb cuts, not taking away from, say, the landscaping of the streetscape or its aesthetics and, and not adding potentially, you know, changes to traffic patterns that might be important.
I'll, let me chime in. This is Chair, this is Rob Chantepetti again. And thank you, Andy, and, and Mr. Swanton and Ms. Webb and Mr. Delisle. I guess I'll just voice, you know, voice my thoughts on this as we kind of go along. But my, my thinking is this, from our standpoint, while I, I don't know that I'm familiar with any all-out, you know, prohibition that's in the code anywhere, at least not that I've seen against, you know, a second curb cut per se. I think it may be, you know, programmatically, I think it may be something, you know, that, that is, that, that is, you know, that the city tries to dissuade homeowners from, from having or requesting or obtaining. But in this instance, as I see it, you know, it's obviously already there. I, I can see that it's already being used. It looks like there's a recreational vehicle that uses it to get to the back of the property. And, you know, from my standpoint, I think for, for, as a board, we were probably best advised to maybe, if we are inclined to, you know, to vote favorably on, on this application, to just sort of carve out the caveat with respect to this applicant's use of a second curb cut to make it conditioned upon DPS whose, whose domain this falls in. You know, it sounds as though the applicant might need to, you know, reconnect some disconnection, you know, with a 2017 application. And if that can happen, certainly, I think as a board, we're, you know, we're, we're well-served to defer to DPS on something like that. But I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily should prohibit the second curb cut. It's not as though it's actually being sought to be cut. It's already there. So it's really, we, we, you know, my thinking is that perhaps we consider not building any prohibition to any approval, if that's the direction we're going in, and allow the applicant to chase down, you know, the existence of this prior approval, if it, if it's to be had and let DPS, you know, authorize it or, you know, or not. What, what are the members' thoughts on something like that?
Sorry, Ms. Webb, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I remain to have an issue with this because DPS, as I said, they told me that they looked through their files back to 2008 and they did not find the approval for the curb cut. So, you know, I think, I have an issue with a single-family home having two separate driveways. It's just too much pavement. And in my opinion, and I think, I'm also concerned about, you know, if, if the curb cut, if the second curb cut were not there today and they were asking for a new one, I would question whether, you know, you'd want one that close to an intersection, especially after the applicant described how the school buses pull up there. I just, you know, think there may be some other safety issues involved that are beyond the scope of our board. But I'm not sure I want to encourage the second driveway.
Okay, fair enough. And Mr. Delisle, I think you were, you wanted to add something as well?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would concur with, with Ms. Webb. I, I think that, you know, we also have to make sure that, you know, we as a board are not rubber-stamping things that are, you know, that haven't been properly obtained. So I think that that's something that we really need to run down and make sure that, that the DPS is aware of this and, and, you know, figure out how this, this came to be before we can sort of endorse a future permitted use of, of this particular curb cut.
Very good. Let's see, have we, Mr. Swanton, have, have we heard from, from you on this yet?
Well, yeah, I mean, I did ask a question on the curb cut and I, I kind of agree with my colleagues. I guess my question would be for the applicant. If you, if you, I mean, if you weren't able to use, try to develop your, you know, mobile home curb cut into more of a full-blown driveway and you had to park your three cars in your existing driveway, would that still work for you?
I, I think it would still work. We would probably, you know, we would, we would need to expand our driveway. Right now, it's just a single driveway where my husband and I park in front of each other. You know, so to be able to fit a third car, we'd probably need to expand the current driveway a bit. You know, and I think, given that my mother's physical disabilities, you know, we might have to consider, you know, how, the best and safest way for her to enter the, the in-law apartment. But, you know, I mean, we're, we're definitely open to looking further into this. And I am really surprised to hear that DPS doesn't have any record of it because they, you know, they, they did come out. I met with them out on the street and, you know, they provided the permit for the paver to come and, you know, do the, the pave part on the side of the house as well. So, you know, so, you know, would it be best right now maybe to ask for a continuance so that we can look further into this? And I would like to explore a little bit more where we originally thought we would be too close to our neighbor on the right side of the house. You know, looking at that, that if we can't have a second driveway, that, you know, the expansion of the original driveway, then might have to move the in-law to the other side for safety reasons.
Ms. Martins, this is Rob Chantepetti. If, if you wish to take a, a step back and press pause on this so that you can, you can try to accomplish both of those items, certainly. The board, you know, we, we often entertain those requests. And is that something you'd like to do? Would you like us to, to, to take up a continuance for you?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, all right. Andy, what is the next, or Caitlin, what's our next available hearing where we can slot in the continuation of this application?
It's November 10th.
How many do we have on November 10th right now?
I believe three right now.
Okay, all right, let's, let's consider that, you know, moving that, moving this to November 10th. So what I will do, Ms. Martins, is we're just going to, we'll have to just do a quick roll call and vote of the board members on the continuance. And then we will invite you to come back and complete your presentation and also provide any changes, any updates or changes or revisions or materials. Just please make sure you get to the planning office well in advance of this way. Wait, wait a minute, not really well in advance. It's only, it's only a handful of days away. So as soon as you can, so this way it can be distributed to us.
Yeah, and this is Andy Port, if I could offer as well. Although that is the earliest date available, one thing we always try to remind both the applicant and the board of is, if a continuance is going to be granted, that we, we try to make sure that it's a logical amount of time for the applicant to make revisions. So if the applicant does not believe that, you know, a week or so is timeframe enough to circle back with this information to, to meet the board's deadline for the following meeting, then it might make more sense to continue it to the second meeting in November. Just a thought.
Yeah, we'd be open to the second meeting just because, especially if, it sounds like we're gonna have to do some digging for the curb cut piece.
Okay.
So that would be November 24th.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martins, and thank you, Andy. Okay, so members of the board, we, we have an applicant requesting to continue the application for 50 Bayberry Road to the meeting of November 24th. Do we have any comments from the members? And in the absence of that, do we have a motion to continue the application?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make a motion to continue the application for variance, application number 2020-056. Special permit, application number 2020-057. And special permit for non-conformities, application number 2020-062 for 50 Bayberry Road to the board's meeting of November 24th, 2020.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Webb. Motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Ms. Webb. Motion to continue the matter to 11:24, 2020. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Chantepetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the application, all three applications for 50 Bayberry Road are continued to November 24th. And thank you very much, Ms. Martins, as well. We'll see you back on the 24th.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, members of the board, moving on to our next public hearing, we have the application of Benjamin Becker, BLB Custom Building on the application address of 28 Highland Avenue. It's a special permit for non-conformities, document 2020-069, to construct a second floor above the existing single-story home, extending upward and laterally both non-conforming front yard setbacks on the corner lot. An addition will be, the addition will be over 500 square feet on a lot with non- An addition will be, the addition will be over 500 square feet on a lot with non-con, with a non-conforming area. And it looks like we have Ben Becker speaking on behalf of the application. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Becker?
Good evening, everyone. Ben Becker here, BLB Custom Building, 6 Chestnut Street, Amesbury, representing my clients, Jen and Derek Gerard. I think they're listening in tonight, so hello to them. So essentially, pretty much what Rob said, the clients are looking to construct a second floor above their existing single story home. So they're adding about 900 square feet in total. And then they're also extending their porch, which currently doesn't, it's, the whole lot is non-conforming. So the porch is going to extend another two feet out. It's just more for aesthetics than it is for actual function. The porch right now is only four feet off the house, but so you can't even put a chair there. So essentially, that's what they're they're looking to do. And yeah, I think that's pretty much, look at the plans, you can see what they're looking to do. It's a ranch, currently a ranch, so they're gonna add a second story onto it.
Okay, Ben, thanks very much. Was there anything else or was that was that about it?
Yeah, that's about it.
Great, thank you. Okay, closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll move to the public comment section. Anyone wish to speak in support, in opposition to, or just simply speak with respect to this application? Just view the right most portion of your Zoom screen where it says raise hand, click on it, and we will, we will recognize you and just we ask you to please give your name and address. See, seeing no hands, going once, going twice. Seeing no hands in this portion of the hearing, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and move to questions from the board. Now, we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Becker, just a couple of questions. In looking at the the presentation material and after going by the the site earlier today, it it looks like, and I just want to confirm this, it looks like the garage will remain sort of the same as it is now and that the 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 second story will go on on the top of the rest of the house, but not implicate the garage at all.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and then can you tell me what you're gonna do in terms of the the materials to side the house and and the windows and what those will look and feel like?
Yeah, so the homeowners had renovated their house when they moved in about like three years ago, and they re-sided it with, I think it was certainty, like the the vinyl shingles. And all the houses in the neighborhood are are pretty much vinyl on Highland. So they're kind of matching what's what's in their neighborhood. All the trim will either be AZAC or or metal wrap. So just shingle style house, they're gonna do a few details on that front dormer. And the front entry porch is gonna be PVC wrapped posts. But essentially, we're keeping the look of the existing house the same. We're just continuing it upwards because it's only three years old, so. And the windows, I'm sorry, will will be, they're gonna be Harvey, Harvey Windows vinyl.
But basically, what's in the in the first floor, similar to what's in the first floor currently?
Yeah, we're gonna match everything that's on the first floor since it was recently renovated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I really don't have an inquiry to this, other than to commend the architect. I enjoyed looking at the plans because they included photos of the existing in showing the proposed elevations. It just made it really easy for comparisons and contextual reference. Basically, they're keeping the, you know, the windows, the proportion, the location exactly the same on the first floor and the door. It's just growing up and within the same footprint, so. It, the staff report mentions there's gonna be no new non-conformity. So I'm in support of this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb, and I agree with that. The materials are really, really well done. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I just, one question, the, you know, your front setback before this proposed second floor was 19 and a half feet from the from the road, and now it's 17. I I just want to double check. I think what I heard you say is the front wall of the house is the same place. You're just making the porch wider, basically. So so that's, is that correct?
Yes, the porch is just extending out.
So so the front wall of the first floor of the house is where it is today. It's not moving and and the wall above it is just an extension, extension upward of that wall. Okay, so basically, the reason you're seen to be encroaching more on the street is just the porch itself, which is, as you point out, looks more like a normal porch rather than one you can't put a chair on. I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, I that was my only question, thanks very much.
No problem.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon.
I don't, I don't really have any questions. I agree, the materials as presented are excellent. I think it's a great addition. I I think they did a great job. I'd like to see the the project go forward, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon, and this is Rob Champetti. I agree with my colleagues and have no questions as well. So closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll go to deliberations. And in the deliberation section, because this is, let me just pull this up real quick. Pardon me. Okay. Just lost my page here. Okay, because this is a special permit for non-conformities, we, in our deliberations, we must find the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming use or structure. And when we make that, when we make those deliberations, we can consider factors such as size, scale, massing and volume as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. This is under 9B2 of the zoning code. So in deliberations, let's begin, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you, Mr. Becker, for for answering my questions a little bit ago. I am, I can support this project in in hearing and seeing the material. It's clear that there's no addition of a new non-conformity and that the changes as proposed will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Here, even though we're we're going up a full floor, maybe even a floor and a half, it, looking at the houses that are abutting and in the neighborhood, there are many two-story, two, two and a half story houses in the neighborhood. And I think that this will will blend in with those structures. And I can support this project. I think that it'll look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb.
I agree with Mr. Delisle. And I also just wanted to reference the staff report comment that the application triggers the tree and sidewalk ordinance for substantial rehab, but there is no space for a new tree at the property according to the tree commission. So I don't know what, I don't know if we've ever run into that before.
Thank you, Ms. Webb, Mr. Swanton.
I actually, I think my colleagues have summarized it well. I can support this application. I think they've already said the reasons, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon.
Again, I think our colleagues, I echo their comments, and I can support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is Rob Champetti. I I agree with my colleagues as well, and I feel the applicant has met the criteria in establishing the findings we need for a special permit for non-conformity. So I too can support it. Closing that portion of the public hearing, do we have a motion to approve?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for 28 Highland Avenue, application number 2020-069.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Calling the roll, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, the application is approved, special permit for non-conformities on 28 Highland Avenue. Mr. Becker, thank you very much for your presentation and your clients as well.
Thank you, the board.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
All right, moving to the next public hearing on our agenda, we have the matter of Jeff and Nora Dodge, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. This is the application for 21-23 Walnut Street. There are two permits being sought under docket 2020-070, a special permit to remove an addition on the rear and install a dormer on the west side of the structure. And then application 2020-071, special permit for non-conformities, to remove the rear addition of two of a of a two-family, convert it to a single family and replace it with a new addition with a larger footprint on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot and structure. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you very much, Chairman and members of the board. With me this evening is Eileen Graff, who's the architect on the project, and Steve Dodge, who is the contractor for the project, and Jeff and Nora Dodge, who are the property owners. So this is, the chair said, is a special permit for non-conformities and a DCOD special permit. Jeff and Nora purchased this home recently. Jeff grew up next door, he and Steve, and they're looking forward to moving back to new report. That is Jeff and Nora looking forward to moving back to new report. Steve, of course, lives here. Currently, the house is a two-family use, and they will be converting it back into a single family use. The property is located in the R2 zoning district. Go ahead and change the panel, please, Andy, thank you. The property is located in the R2 zoning district in the DCOD overlay district. The structure on the property was constructed in around 1850 and is listed as contributory on the district data sheets. There is no Form B for the property. The property includes 54.50 feet of frontage, where 90 is required for a single family home, and includes 10,064 square feet, or 10,000 square feet is required for a single family home. The side yard requirement is 10 feet, and there is a non-conforming side yard setback on the northeastern side of the property at 4.6. The applicant proposes to remove the rear portion of the structure, which is a later added addition, later being relative, including more than 25% of the exterior walls, which is 36%, which is why we are here for the DCOD special permit. So you can go to the next slide, please, Andy. So the applicant appeared before the historic commission and provide to them a full title and history of the property, which has been included, of course, in the board's application packages as well, along with a structural conditions report from a structural engineer. I received today an email from the chair of the commission, which I believe the board has also received, stating that I had mischaracterized the role and findings of the commission. I was concerned about that. In fact, I was so, I was so concerned that I went back to my filing with this board dated September 16 to see exactly what the chair was talking about. So the chair had two points. One, he indicated that I misstated the fact that commission members had had, several commissioners had a site visit. He said the site visit was by him and no others. And so I went back to my notes. I take pretty copious notes during these hearings. I went back to my notes, I went back to my filing, and I went back to the audio of the meetings. So first of all, my September 16 submission to this board on page two, I say, including site visits, plural, by several commissioners. As far as I knew when I wrote that, that was accurate. So, in fact, Mr. Richard visited the site not once but twice. He visited with myself and Steve Dodge, and then he visited prior to the opening of the hearing with Mr. Dodge as well. Joe Morgan, who is a member of the commission, during the August 27 meeting, stated that he reviewed the site earlier in the day, including viewing the rear addition. Christopher Fay, another member, during the August 27 meeting, stated he had walked by the property numerous times. Peter McNamie went, quote, went by the property on August 27. He said additionally, he was the one who originally, not, he didn't say this, but additionally, he was the one who originally raised the idea of the site visit at the August 27 meeting. However, he did not attend the site visit because he had a conflict. At the September 10 meeting, he said he conducted his own site visit to view the property and visualize it with the dormer. He said he did this in part because he, quote, was not concerned about the engineer's findings, end quote. Ron Zemba, another member of the commission, visited the site prior to the August 27 meeting, which he did not end up attending. However, at the September 10 meeting, he said that while visiting the property, he was able to take a look at the existing condition in the rear being removed. He did not question its poor condition at all. In fact, he said, quote, "He was afraid something was going to fall in on him." So my statement in the September 16 submission to this board that including site visits by several commissioners is entirely accurate. Indeed, five of the members had visited the site. The second thing I was concerned about was Mr. Richard's comments that I had misrepresented the the findings of the board. He says that the representations about the action of the commission in my letter September 16 are taken, excuse me, he says, so he's concerned about my representations related to that. So my representations about the action taken by the commission in my letter of September 16 are taken from the minutes of the commission meeting of September 10. On page one of the minutes, the chair states, and I quote, "He visited the site and does not question the findings of the engineer," end quote. The findings of the engineer state, quote, "In my opinion, the current rear section of the building is unsafe, unstable, and not capable of resisting expected loads." That's what Mr. Richard said he agreed with. On page two, the chair states, "The report will indicate that the NHC does not dispute the condition of the addition," end quote. Those are from the minutes of the September 10 meeting. I think it's important to note that I submitted my submission to this board on September 16. The commission's final report was not available and provided until September 21. And that's why our letter to this board relied on the minutes. I say in my letter that the applicant contends and the historic commission, the applicant contends and the historic commission agreed and which is supported by the structural engineer that the poor condition of the later additions to the original structure, as described above and evidenced by the photos attached here to, prohibit the reasonable use of those portions of the structure. So I just reiterated what the minute said in addition to the engineer's report. So I I wanted to say that because I think it's really important because it gives obviously credibility to what we submitted on 16. There were five members of the commission that viewed the site and viewed the addition that's being suggested to be removed. The chair said he agreed with the engineer's report. And as I read to you from the quotes from the hearing, members of the commission said the same. Indeed, I don't think that the report issued by the commission on September 21 says anything different, actually. It says, and I quote specifically, quote, "The NHC does not take issue with the applicant's claim that structural deficiencies justify the demolition rather than restoration of the rear addition, nor do we consider ourselves sufficiently expert in such matters to make a definitive determination." Then they go on to say exactly what the ordinance says, which they make recommendations to you about the historic nature. And then this board gets to decide whether or not they have enough information. So I want to say that because I want to go into the to the conditions of this section of the of the property, because that's what we're asking to be removed. And I think it's important for the board to understand that I don't think anybody disagrees with the condition of the rear section of the property. So the original set structure was built in 1850, according to the district data sheets. We're proposing to demolish what appears to have been built in multiple iterations later than what is shown on the 1914 Sandborne map. We engaged Joe Fix with over 30 years of experience, he's a local structural engineer, to review conditions of the addition. He found, and I quote, "The current rear section of the building is unsafe, unstable, and is not capable of resisting expected loads." As you can see from the report that we provided to this board, As you can see from the report that we provided to this board, Mr. Fix goes on to say that the the foundation framing joists and roof structures are in poor shape and of insufficient strength to support expected loads. Specifically, he found that the grade around the rear of the building is too high. It slopes toward the house, which has resulted in rotting of the sill and lower sections of the sheathing. Further, the perimeter foundation consists of several courses of brick masonry on very loose rubble, also evident in one if one looks under the crawl space, which will show you shortly. If you could turn the page here, so to speak, Andy. Upon observance, the crawl space as well, there are several wood columns set on large stones acting as footings in unstable condition. He goes on to say the second floor framing consists of undersized joists and beams that have been cut off. This was directly observed by the Chair of the Commission as well. I was at that site visit with Mr. Dodge, Steve Dodge in the Chair. The roof structure is built with undersized rafters spaced at twenty inches with recent sistering of two by tens and collar ties, which are set too high to keep the rafters from spreading. Further, what was noticed was that there was a site and the site visit is that many of the rafters are barely sitting on the tops of the walls, which you'll see shortly. And the conventional framing positions, the heel of the rafter on the wall plate, and these rafters were built to toe at the wall plate, which is the least effective structurally. Many, in fact, have minimal contact. So Mr. Fix concludes, in my opinion, the current rear section of the building is unsafe, unstable and is not capable of resisting expected loads. It was interesting at the hearing to see Mr. here Mr. Zamba say he wouldn't even go in it. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here are photos from Mr. Fix's report. When we get to the site plan, you'll see that the, and I don't know if any of you have actually walked by this property, but the rear of the site is higher than where the building structure is, is slopes down to the street. And as you can see, the building is built right into the ground here. So that's where he's talking about the water running directly into the building. And actually, inside the building, you can see the rot as well. Interior review, the rot and deterioration of the rear wall of the addition is this next photo, which is obvious. Good, the next slide, please, Andy. And here's the crawl space. It's under the addition, the wood column is set on an unstable stone. And then you can see it's set on a brick footing. You go to the next slide, please, Andy. Here's the second floor framing of the addition. You can see the beams cut off, resulting in an unsafe condition. Based upon my conversation with Mr. Dodge with Mr. Richard's present, you know, I don't know when this was done. Obviously, nobody knows when it was done, but it may have been done when it was made into a two family to fit the various rooms and stuff that they tried to add in there. Here's the second floor collar ties that are set too high, which induces too much stress on the rafters. But you can also see where the rafters are on the wall plates as well on the tips of them. Go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here are the exterior photos of the addition that is being proposed to be removed. This is a lower in height than the original structure. You can see it's got a porch and a deck on it. So this is the first photo is looking east, I think, and the second photo is looking west. If you go to the next slide. Here's the rear. That barn is going to be restored as part of this project, but you can see the addition on the rear with the sliding glass doors and the yard slopes down into the the basement of the addition. And if we go to the next slide, please, Andy. So this is the site plan. And you can see that the four point six side setback on the right hand side, that's what's going to be extended. You can see the proposed the addition in the rear that's proposed to be removed. And then the darker line is the proposed addition on the rear and which will also have a porch area on it. And Eileen will go over that in a minute. So before we get into the specifics, just to go over the demolition control overlay district special permit, the board gets to make findings relative to the historic building and structure. They get to hear what the historic commission has to say, take a look at any reports that we have provided relative to that and make a determination. It's enough information for them to decide whether or not they can allow the removal of this and whether or not there's any remaining substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of state building code as it applies to historic buildings or structures or other applicable lots. So we'd like you to consider that as you continue to go through this plan. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to go over the existing and proposed elevations.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eileen Graff. Actually, Andy, do you mind if we stay on the site plan just for a moment, just to orient? Thank you. So to reiterate the areas in which we are renovating slash rebuilding, going back to the area of the rear addition that's going to be removed, demolished and then rebuilt. And as you could see from the dark line, that's the proposed footprint. And the idea behind demolishing the existing is is really sort of the energy or focus of the added space naturally suggests going towards the rear. It's the more private side of the property. It's the sunnier side. We're maintaining the width of the building. It's sixteen feet wide. That's two story addition on the rear is basically going to be rebuilt in the same proportion, same width, extending towards the back of the property. With the adjacent garage in its location, it 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 sort of naturally creates this long linear structure. So again, the six navigating that sixteen foot width of the building. And then the bumps that you see that are towards the driveway are the one story aspects that currently are the covered porch and some of it will become living space and some will be maintained as covered entry space. And then on the rear of that sixteen foot wide addition heading towards the rear is also a seven foot deep one story addition. So these one story aspects help to bring down the scale of the two story addition. Then speaking to the the front or the original eighteen eighteen fifties Greek revival as a whole, it it has actually really good bones, good structure. But over time, from the development of the two store two family aspect, there are a lot of partitions in in sort of odd places. So our goals with the project is to unify this two family into a into a clean and and well flowing, single family home. So we could flip now to the next slide, please. And we can show again in the in the drawing form, the existing house. So the front elevation, a classic Greek revival. Windows had been replaced, so they're one over ones at the moment. There's a lot of rot and such on the existing home. Lots of critters getting into the attic, et cetera, especially in this in this original structure. Then you could see the driveway view on the bottom elevation. Again, that covered porch on that back addition part. And then if you slide to the next the view from the rear, as Lisa had mentioned, the rear is the area that receives the most, actually seen best in the bottom photo, the gradual slope. I think from the front to the back of the property, there's a difference of about probably nine feet, maybe even ten feet from front to back in elevation. So it's really challenged in the existing conditions in that it has been taking on water for a long time. So our goals with the new structure is to improve this condition so that we can deal with the water and get it around the building in a in a more healthy way for the structure. The next slide. Here it is existing in plan. Again, the front, the front structure, which is the original, which is roughly twenty two by thirty two in footprint and the rear additions, again, sixteen feet wide in its proportion with the covered porch. And then you could see, I just want to point out that the third floor, the the right side drawing, I just want to point out that there is access currently to the existing third floor, the attic space. It is a very challenging approach as you go up. It's only two feet wide, that current stair. And you run into a sideways pose as you get to the top as there's there. There is no headroom as you get to the top. So you're sort of leaning towards the right to to make your way up there. But there is finished space up there, but just a difficult cumbersome way to get there currently. And then the next slide. So again, to review, removing the existing addition to bring some added new space on the rear to bring some uniformity from a current two family to a single family. If, as Lee said, mentioned, we got support from the historical commission with the removal of that existing addition and they had no problems with the proposed. As for the changes to the original, as mentioned, some material renovations, cleaning up some of the spaces within in the in the original structure. And then on the third floor, as I just mentioned, as ways to improve this access to the third floor, we are proposing a dormer on the northwest side, which will give the headroom that's needed to access the third floor. The original dormer that we proposed to the historic commission showed a shed roof. And we have said, and they recommended, made recommendations of of possibly gabbling it. And that's what we have in this proposal is a gabled dormer to pick up on the characteristics of the of the Greek revival. Another change would be to the original structure is removing the chimney. That's due to spatial needs internally driven. And then on the the other elements that change are on the driveway side of the property on the on the southeast side. On the top floor, we're removing an existing window in the center part of that long wall and replacing it with an oval window. And then below that, there is a trellis that will replace a door that's currently located there as as a way to resolve some interior spatial needs. But then also a try to minimize the confusion from the exterior regarding where to enter the building. And you know, as you enter the driveway of this property, you could stand in one place and you would see three different doorways to enter. And by removing the stairs to the secondary door, it will, we were hoping to make it clearer that there is a new mudroom door to be used as the secondary door in the in the addition of the of the project. And then the next slide. Again, here's some photos of the existing house. The bottom photograph can show the the existing doorway that is to be removed and replaced with the trellis. And an oval window will replace that window that's above it to give the balance and and sort of uniqueness to to the monotony of these windows. Next slide. Here it is from across the street. You can see to the right, there's a lot of, there's a some, there's probably two or three good sized trees. I think we'll see it in other photographs too, that sort of hinder the view of this northwestern side where the dormer will be. And then this is a view on the right photograph is a view, once again, showing the multiple doors. And if you can imagine, on the rear of this existing photograph is the columns that would flank where the new entry will be on the mudroom. Next photograph. This photograph on the left is a is a good view. This is seen from, I would, this is twenty five Walnut is the one you see with the flag. And this is the view as you walk from towards town. And this is really giving a good example of how much sort of foliage there is in in sort of creating obstruction of the straight on view of where the dormer will be. And then you can also see the various windows that are also placed on this existing elevation. And our goals with the new project, the new addition, is that we start to unify the 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 fenestration on this elevation. And the next. And this is actually a good view of of the trees that that are sort of screening this this elevation. And then the next can show proposed drawings. Here we go. So the top drawing will show where that dormer is proposed. We're stepping it back from the wall plane below by eighteen eight inches, excuse me. You could see the side of the gable dormer. And then on the front elevation, again, improving and repair restoring the existing detail that's on this house. It's 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 again, got a lot of rot in the woodwork and the millwork around this house. So that will all be repaired. We're proposing to change the windows to a two over two and also replace the clavards, many that are rotten, to a to a hardy plank clavard. There's existing stairs leading to the front door that are 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 a little tired and then also rather steep. So we plan to rebuild those in a more gradual, comfortable progression. The next elevation. Thank you. And this is the driveway side. This long elevation can show the changes to that oval window, that the the middle windows replaced. And then above that, you could see a skylight. There exists a skylight right now and we're going to slide it to a to a better location. And then to the rear is the new addition. At the two story part, you can see, and then, of course, the one story aspects coming towards you from the driveway and then also leading to the backyard. And again, you could see the consistency of of bringing the two over two windows throughout the house. And the next elevation. And this is the rear elevation. And the only thing to point out, again, we are we are recreating that sixteen foot wide proportion of the existing addition. But we are just increasing the height just a hair. And that's to help improve the current condition where there's a floor, a floor change steps down from the original house to the back addition currently. So we'd like to improve that by having it all one level. And in the process, so we don't lose the headroom, we are just lifting the wall height up one foot, but still keeping it in a in a in relation to the original house is a secondary and subordinate form to the original so as not to collide with the the detail and the the moldings of the original. And then the next elevation. And here's a view showing the gabled, it's a shallow gable for the dormer to the third floor. Likewise, this elevation shows the step back from the front elevation. It's five foot six from from the front elevation. And I think that we feel that this helps minimize its presence on the street. Again, bringing up the fact that there are, there's a fair amount of foliage in that area. So I think it would be a pretty hard view to get for most of the year. And the next view. And here it is in floor plan. Left side being the first floor, again, cleaned up, original structure. And if you follow the left side of the of that plan, you can see the extension of the four point six foot setback, the nonconformity will continue and extend. and extend towards the backyard. And then if you go over to the right, just to point out where that dormer is. Also seen in this perspective is the dormer stepping back from both the front and the wall plane below it in a shallowed gable form. Here you can see the two over two windows. And all the current original detailing will be will be restored in in its place. And the next perspective. Thank you. And this is the view from across the street showing the property in its entirety with the new structure on the rear. Again, stepping back from the driveway side helps minimize its its scale on the rear. And and you can also see some changes to the front of the barn, allowing for a car to be parked inside and then some changes on the interior on the second floor, reflecting some window changes there. And that should give a good summary of the architectural changes proposed.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
So I will go through the the other permit that we need is a special permit for nonconformities. First section of that is that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity. And the second part is that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconformity. So if the next slide, first, there will be no new addition of a new nonconformity. Their proposed addition does extend the four point six foot setback on the right side of the structure. In fact, the conversion, the single family use from the two family use will eliminate the frontage and area nonconformity. So it's actually an improvement from a dimensional point of view. And then if you go to the next slide, please, Andy. The proposed changes, we believe, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. First, the board can note from the plans that the applicant is removing an addition that clearly was not originally or recently constructed properly and is insignificant to repair. The applicant's proposal to bring back the original single family use and repair the property to be an active and attractive improvement to the neighborhood cannot be overlooked. Further, the reduction in density on the site as a whole is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and will certainly be less detrimental in and of itself to the neighborhood. The applicant has gone to great lengths to raise the issue, address the issues raised at the first meeting of the historic commission by stepping back the addition on the side, which I need talked about to provide a separation on the southeastern side and clearly show the difference from the new from the old. In addition, the dormer, which is being placed on the right side of the house, is on the side. The neighbor actually supports this project and we've submitted a letter of support from him. And perhaps he's here tonight, I don't know. In addition, the applicant is extending the addition beyond that, which was originally existing on the structure, but still continues to be over a hundred feet from the rear property line. The neighbor most impacted, as I said, is supportive of this project. And the resulting structure will neither be the largest nor the smallest in living area as compared to lot size in the entire neighborhood. So we request the board make a finding that the proposed renovations are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure and approve the special permit for nonconformities. I will also add that we've had review relative to the street and sidewalk ordinance. And the applicant will, at the recommendation or requirement of the DVW, be redoing the sidewalk in front and adding the street tree. So that obviously can be a part of any decision of the board. So with that, we request the board approve both special permits. And we would love to answer any questions the board might have.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Eileen Graff, as well, for the presentation. So closing that portion of the public hearing or the presentation part of the public hearing, we'll move to to the public comment section. And if anyone wishes to speak in support of or in opposition to, or just simply speak in connection with, we ask that you just please give your name and address and raise your hand at the bottom right of the screen and Andy Port will recognize you one at a time. I see hands up, why don't we, Andy? I see Chairman Glenn Richards of the Newburyport Historic Commission's hand us up. Since it much of this is relevant to that material, I'd like to recognize Chairman Richards, if we could.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the recognition. Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street, and also within the Newburyport Historic Commission. Well, I wasn't expecting to have to discuss that memo, but I'll touch on that very, very briefly. On the two points, as far as the so called site visit, where there's actually no disagreement between Attorney Mead's description and mine in the sense that when I, the commission arranged at our first meeting, a yes, that there would be a quote site visit, and that was the one that I was that she referred to that both Steve and Jeff Dodge were there, as well as Attorney Mead and myself. And I was the only member of the commission that was there at the quote site visit. That's how I was thinking of it. I do not dispute that other members, you know, walked by or looked in and so forth. You know, so I'm sorry if that had the appearance of contradicting. I certainly didn't anticipate stirring up a storm of controversy over that. So that's that, the thing that's really more important, though, is the character and my mischaracterization word referred to Attorney Mead's letter to you guys dated September sixteenth. And in it, on the second page near the top, she says, following two hearings with the commission, including site visits by several commissioners, in fact, Ms. Mead read from the same section. And following site visits, the commission recommended that the rear structure proposed to be removed indeed is of poor condition, retains no substantial remaining value or reasonable use. And it's particularly the word recommended there that I was concerned with. And my memo to the zoning board of appeals chair was basically to say that the the historic commission does not feel qualified to make a recommendation either way as to structural considerations or retaining economic value. What we did do, and Ms. Mead is quite correct in pointing out that at both in at public statements in the meetings and in my report, I did say, and I still, and I agree, that what I saw on my site visits was such that I would not contradict the findings of their engineer. I said, based on what I saw, not being an engineer myself or someone qualified in that area, it certainly looked to me like what he said was probably correct. So I didn't raise any opposition to the Joe Fix engineering report. So that, but you know, the important point is just that to understand that the commission, the historic commission, isn't making a quote recommendation either way. We're just saying that we don't see anything to us that contradicts the report. But you know, that's not something we feel expertise in. That was the point I was trying to make. Getting to the actual designs and so forth. Just to be very brief, I applaud the architect. I think she did a great job of modifying the dormer. I think that the solution that she came up with is is a much better one. I personally, in fact, I had a vision of something like that myself. I don't think I said anything about it, but yeah, I think that, you know, as unusual as as a dormer might be on a house, you know, Greek revival house, that one, you know, pretty much looks like it. It's, it doesn't look unusual, doesn't look odd. It looks like a better fit, so my hat's off to her on that solution. The Ms. Mead already mentioned the changes that were made from the first visit to the second, and those are all good and recognized improvements. The only thing that remains really is that east facade, the door and window. I personally don't have a big problem with the oval window on top. But I did want the zoning board of appeals to understand that most of the commissioners felt pretty strongly that the door on the east facade was an integral part of that facade and couldn't see any reason why that couldn't be kept, even if it was nonfunctional. Looking at the presentation tonight, I noticed that the rendering kind of showed the landscaping and everything so arranged that the trellis, you know, kind of looked natural there, which of course, you know, but it's not quite like that today. So obviously, the landscaping might be a little different if there was a door there. And thinking about it tonight, I'm thinking, hmm, so do you want landscaping that shows leading up to a door that's nonfunctional? So I guess that's a potential issue. But the point, so I'll just, I'll leave it with is that the the commission did feel that that facade did, was historically significant, did make a historical statement, so to speak. And if at all possible, should be kept, you know, intact as as that facade. Other than that, you know, we, we're not against the project. I think that overall, it's going to be an improvement to the structure. And I wish Mr. Dodge, good luck with it.
Thank you, Chairman Richards, for your comments. Seeing the hand raised for Kathleen Dodge. Andy, could we unmute Ms. Dodge's mic as well? Hear from her. Kathleen, you'll need to unmute on your end as well.
Hi, this isn't Kathleen, it's Stephen Dodge, 22 Union Street. You know, aside from the fact that I'm going to be doing the work there and it's next door to where I grew up. With all due respect to the historical commission, I spent eight years on the historical commission, recently resigned the first of the year. And I was fortunate enough to serve under some great chair people, Linda Smiley and Sarah White. And I think we, you know, I won't speak for them, but I'm going to say in my experience that a project like this was always viewed as favorable. The side door would never have been an issue. In fact, if you go to the Preservation Trust website and look at the diagram of a Greek revival, there is no side door and there is a round window. So I don't know where that disconnect is. But again, I said, with all due respect to the historical commission, I have far more experience in these issues and the issues that they raise to me are not issues. And I think Eileen has done a beautiful job. It's going to be a wonderful project and it's certainly going to be the shining star in the neighborhood. So thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodge. We can recognize Skip Short, whose hand I see up, and if we can unmute Skip Short.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. My name is Skip Short. I live at 25 Walnut Street, directly next door to the subject property and in the house formerly owned by the Dodge family. The Dodge family are longtime Newburyport residents. And Jeff and Nora are looking to relocate their family to Newburyport from New York to live in this house on the street where Jeff grew up. He's not some developer that's looking to come into Newburyport and make a quick buck on the property like so many people have done in our city. They are looking to turn this two family home back into a single family, which in this day and age for Newburyport should be applauded and strongly supported. I'll make a comment on that side door, just because I I happen to live across the street at 12 California Street at at one point before moving into 25 Walnut, and that is a Greek revival. And I would just say that, having lived in a Greek revival from the street, this property looks exactly like a classic Greek revival. But from the driveway with that, you know, that door that the historical commission would like to see retained. To me, it doesn't look anything like a Greek revival. In fact, it looks more like my house, which is more like a colonial. It's got, you know, the the door in the middle, two windows out to the side, five windows across the top. If I'm standing in the driveway of that house, which I've done quite a bit recently, it doesn't feel like a Greek revival at all. But again, I'm no expert on historical characteristics of homes. But you know, from from my perspective, from the from the street, it looks exactly like a Greek revival. From the side, it doesn't. So maintaining that side door doesn't seem to do a whole lot from the historical perspective of a Greek revival. And then the last point I'll make, just to keep it brief, is that you know, unfortunately, this property has fallen into a serious disrepair. And it's really a shame, and it's a huge eyesore in our neighborhood. Jeff and Nora have been very forthcoming with me being, you know, maybe the most impacted by some of the things that they're looking to change, but also with with all of the neighbors who will about their property. And you know, they've shared the plans. The people that I've spoken to fully support what they're doing and actually thank them for taking the time and putting all the money that they're that they're going to put forth into this property to bring it back to life. And we really look forward to having them as as our new neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Was there anything else?
No, thank you for the opportunity.
Very good. Anyone else wish to, in connection with this application? Seeing no further hands, I going once, going twice, I see no further hands, so I'll close that portion of the hearing and we will go to questions from the board. Let's begin with Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's, I have a few questions. I think that the most important one is not really a question, but more of a clarification or just a supplementing the the record, so to speak, to make sure we have the necessary evidence entered into the record to make the findings required under the subsection E of the the DCOD portion of the ordinance. Attorney Mead, could you, could you just clarify, and I think in your, the beginning of your remarks, you sort of asked us to do this, I think, by implication. But could you just clarify the the requirement that that there be evidence in the record to show that the the structure retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation, et cetera?
Sure. So the ordinance allows, and the historic commission did say this in their report as well. So the ordinance allows A, or requires A, the historic commission make a report. And B, allows this board to rely on any information that the applicant has provided relative to the condition and gives permission, but doesn't require the board to seek a peer review of that if you want it. So that's, that's kind of your authority, which is accurate under the under the ordinance. But then the ordinance says that you need to make a finding based upon everything that's been presented to you of the, hang on a minute, I'll read it exactly. That the the part of the structure to be demolished retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of state building code as it applies to historic buildings or structures or other applicable laws. And so I think that what's really key about that is that there is an or section, right? No remaining substantial market value or reasonable use. And we have provided to this board. So we provide the same thing to the historic commission that we do to the board. We provide the history of the structure. And then we provide the evidence, in this instance, supported by professional and structural engineer Joe Fix, relative to the condition of the structure and what can happen to it. So you've got all of that on the record. And then in addition, to go back to the chair of the commission's comments, while he's not making a recommendation, they did all agree that the condition of that is as the engineer has said.
Very good. Thank you for that. Okay. So the next couple of questions, I just wanted to direct to Ms. Graff. Can you, Ms. Graff, just sort of give your thoughts on the the east side vestigial doorway? Hello?
Eileen? I think you're muted. Sorry. Did you, did you want my opinions as to why we're removing it or?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just to sort of get your thoughts as as the architect as to, you know, what you saw. as to, you know, what you saw relative to what is, what is typical for a Greek revival home versus what is unique and quirky about this building as, or this structure as it currently exists?
Sure. So our town has assorted samples of Greek revivals. It's not often that you see a centered side entry like this. Often you'll see a side porch with a, with, it might be a doorway on it, but it's, it's rather on an asymmetrical elevation. This is, this is not, I wouldn't say that this is the most common layout of, of a Greek revival. I'm trying to think of, if I could think of another address in town that has this exact floor plan. But it certainly poses the challenge with this, there's a few things. As we mentioned, there's the elevation change. So, so we have or require, if the door were to stay, for example, if you run this idea of, of okay, hypothetically, you could change and board up what's behind this door. And it's non-functioning on the inside and you have the freedom to, to, to do what you want on the interior. But it still leaves the fact that you have to maintain or leave this staircase to a doorway, which doesn't function. You know, it's, it's creating this sort of pretend world, this of, of, of a door to nowhere. And, and again, as, as mentioned earlier with the perspective, I mean, the, the plan is to, to landscape it appropriately, that it won't be such something, it won't feel like something is missing. The playfulness of the oval window above, I think, actually works to help sort of balance the, bring back, or go back to the central line, that the symmetry of that wall. So, so I like that aspect. Going back to that oval, actually, they, one of the comments they had, one of the members of the Historic Board actually had no problem at all with the oval and liked it, but had a problem with the scale. So in this iteration that we've submitted to you as a zoning board, is actually an enlarged oval window to, to, to sort of take on that suggestion that the board member had. But it's really a challenge really about, about this staircase that leads to nothing, even if we were to, to deal with it on the interior. The secondary door that's going in is replacing it. Therefore, that's where they, we want to direct people that are coming to visit. It's a skinny driveway, so we, we're really up, a skinny property, I should say, where we're really up against the, the house. So it doesn't give us a lot of room to, to sort of navigate around an existing stair again to nowhere. So that, that's our challenge with the, with its, with its existing state. And we're hoping that with this trellis, that we can sort of screen or, 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 or sort of blend in to that, to that old location of the, of the doorway. Hopefully that gives some opinion to answer your question.
No, no, that's great. I appreciate that. I wanted to get your opinion because I can see it sort of both ways. You know, that the doorway is a unique and quirky thing on the, on that east, east side facade. And, you know, where you have this being a, a structure that's contributing to the, the overall historic district, that may mean something. But certainly from, you know, a, a new build and design sort of perspective, it, it, it's sort of odd. So I just wanted to get your sort of clarification on that.
Andy, maybe you could go to that perspective, just, just to show Mr. Delisle so that you can see where Eileen was talking about it. One more, there you go.
Yep, that's very, very, very helpful. Then, let's see. And the chimney being removed, that's to give sort of, you, they're going to do something else with, with the, with the practical aspects of a chimney are required for whatever's going to go in systems-wise. So that's going to come out to provide for additional space or ease of configuration within the, the living space?
That's correct. And that's, and that's, and sorry to interrupt. And that's through three floors of space where it becomes challenging as, as, as most of these antique homes are with the mass that it takes up within the, within the limited footprint.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Again, I can see that, I can see that both ways. And then I think my final question is the, with regard to the garage, the garage is just going to sort of be re-clad, is that the idea there? Or is that going to be rebuilt? Or just sort of the, the structural aspects stay in place and it's just going to be re-clad?
Sure. Yeah, it's, I'll let Eileen address this, but it, the structural aspects are staying in place. And actually, we show it on here, but it's, it's just being re-clad and revived, so to speak, essentially by right. It's not, it's not part of any of the, the permit. But go ahead, Eileen, you can.
That's correct. Thank you, Lisa. So the footprint is not changing, Mr. Delisle. It's, it's staying the same footprint, but simply sort of the same way that this current house state is, which is rather deteriorated, it too needs some attention. So there's existing living space on the second floor above there. So, but the connection to it is rather strange and it's going through unfinished space. So we're just going to clean up the, you know, provide a, you know, new openings for the garage, for the car, as well as a clean way to get up the stairs, which is that doorway you see to the right. So some of the window openings will change in its location with the new layout on the second floor. But re-cladding to match the house, resolving the rot likewise on the back of their, of this addition, the back of the garage suffers the same problem of, of rot from water coming towards the back of the, of the garage. So there's a, there's a lot to repair there as well. So that's the goal there is to, to minimize the continued deterioration on the rear.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's it. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Delisle, thank you. Ms. Webb?
Hi. This has been an excellent presentation, all the detail around the, the residence. And I want to commend the applicants for, you know, returning a formerly, or originally single-family, turned two-family back to a single-family. My, my question, as Mr. Delisle wrapped up with, was more about the, the barn structure because it wasn't really a big part of the, the original presentation and whether or not that was, in fact, previously used as a garage for vehicles? Or, you know, is the flooring going to support a car? And if the second floor was used as living space, is there plumbing out there? I mean, do we need to be concerned about that becoming a second unit? Those kind of questions.
Well, I, I'm going to answer some of those. Living space, though, it, it doesn't mean that it's an apartment, right? It doesn't have a kitchen or anything like that. I don't even know if there's plumbing out there. Eileen can address that. But it's finished, so to speak, right? So you could have an office or something there, which is what exists today. So that's why it's, nothing's happening that doesn't exist today. Eileen can answer the plumbing question, but it's certainly not residential space, let's say that. I don't know about the floor, Eileen.
Sure. And I can answer to that. There is a powder room. It's, it's not very desirable to any of us who are listening in, I promise you. So we will improve the, the current powder room. It's a slab garage concrete floor, so it could, it continued to support. There are posts in odd locations currently for a car to come in. So, so structurally, those things will be modified on the interior. But more or less, that's an open space on that first level. So minor modifications for point post-locations.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb, and Mr. Swanton.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, um, yeah, I'd like to start out by just echoing a comment that, you know, I've walked down the street quite a few times and, and I think some people pointed out that this is, this project's a service to a house on the street that could really use some help. And I think the house has some potential. I like a lot about what I see. My questions, if, if I could go back to, I think Mr. Delisle brought up the, on a demolition like that, like this, we have to determine whether there's no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use. And I'm just double-checking here, but I had heard that this house, you guys bought this house in June. It was two condos, so the first, the front of it was 275,000 and this back part that's being demolished was 250. Is that correct or do I have the wrong data there?
So there, there were two condos, but they're not, they're, they're not divided back like what you've just described. And maybe Eileen or Steve who did that demolition can describe it better. But the addition in the rear wasn't its own separate unit.
Okay, well, that, 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 thank you, Attorney Mead. I think that addresses my question. You know, as far as the other things we've been talking about, the, as I read the zoning ordinance, you know, we're supposed to be looking at the unique architecture and character of the building that we're demolishing here. And while I understand the demolition of the back portion and the engineer's report is quite thorough, I, I would like to just ask a question about the demolition of some of the features that have already come up on, on the side, the door and the window. And full disclosure, I live in a house in the same vintage, 1847 Newbury Port. I live in a community of, a lot of my neighbors have very similar Greek revival houses. And so when I saw this application, I, I kind of looked into it because I'd never seen a, a, a big oval window on a Greek revival house. And I actually kind of looked into it. And what I found was nobody put all the windows on houses until like 50 years later in the, in the late Victorian era or in the beginning of the colonial revival era. You'll occasionally find a Greek revival house with a kind of a smaller one stuck onto it that has been put on much later. But, but the way I read the zoning ordinance here is we're supposed to be maintaining the architectural character of the city. What I get, what I worry about is if somebody kind of makes a change where they think it looks kind of nice. I think I heard the words, it broke up the monotony or it was playful. And that, that's nice. But the way I read the bylaw here is we're supposed to, or the zoning ordinance, we're supposed to be looking at the architectural character of New Report that's unique and original, not what somebody would wish it to be 100 years later. So I guess, I, my question is really, I, maybe it's a question for the architect, but is this really a feature of Greek revive or did I find the wrong research here?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit that first. I'm gonna let Eileen. So in the submission that we made to the Histor, excuse me, to the zoning board, and I don't have it in this, I don't have it in this presentation, but you all have it in front of you. The page before Exhibit B, the page before the report of the structural engineer is the, is a photograph taken off of the New Report Preservation Trust website as examples of Greek revivals.
Yeah, I've seen that, Attorney Mead, and I, I, I saw it in your application. And I believe that falls into that category that I mentioned of, since they were invented 50 years later, ones you find like that were applied later. And so I'm basically asking the architect, if I'm wrong in my research, were Greek revival homes originally sporting large oval windows of this type? Or are they ones that were added many years later?
But I don't, I don't, I, you know, what I would, I would say, it's not that they're added many years later. I, I think what I'd like to sort of pick up on is that the buildings can evolve. While it is about preserving the character of our community, of the architectural community in our town, I think that there, that is also important to address the fact that the house will evolve. And, and so there, you know, whether it's, you know, a Victorian that then at some point takes on an Art Deco front door. I mean, it's not that, everything in our town isn't so pure that it's okay to see things of, of 25 years later or 50 years later. You know, this addition on the back of this house was 50 years later. So I think that while it's not a pure, it may not be, you know, a pure Greek revival in its shape, it doesn't mean it's not an historic element that we can see oval historic windows throughout our town. So I guess that's how I'd argue the presence of this oval is not, is not unheard of in our, in our sort of library of antique homes. So that's, that, that would be my position on it as far as introducing it at this time in 2020. It, it, we, we, we see examples of, of sort of non-rectilinear windows throughout our town.
I appreciate, I appreciate the response. And I, you know, I had a similar concern about the side door, but like has been stated, there aren't, it, it's not like every Greek revival house had a Greek door. They all had rectangular windows, but they did not have, a lot of them did not have side doors. Most of the ones in my neighborhood don't. I mean, and I get the point about not having a side door to nowhere. I can just see the firemen coming and banging on the door and not getting in. And I think your use of a trellis, you're at least trying. So I get that. My, my issue was more with the window. But with that, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ken. And Mr. Shannon, do you have any comments or questions?
I just had a question and maybe Attorney Mead can help, help me wade through it. One of the requirements for non-conformity is we must find that there will be no intensification or extension of an existing non-conformity or the addition of a new non-conformity. And I think we're all agreeing, and it was even in, even in our letter from the planning board, that we are extending a non-conformity. So that, that one phrase in that rule, if you will, we're going to have to turn a blind eye to. Am I reading that correctly?
No, Mr. Shannon, you're not exactly. You're reading the section applicable to anything other than single and two-family homes. Single and two-family homes are treated differently, not only in New Report, but across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Chapter 48, Section 6. And single and two-family homes that are pre-existing non-conforming, you can extend or exacerbate or intensify a non-conformity. In some towns, you can do it by right. In other towns, you can't, like in New Report, you need a, you need permission from this board. And, but you can't create a new one. And if you create a new one, then you need a variance. So the provision that you are reading is relative to non-single and two-family. Thank you very much, Andy. So here's the, the single or two-family right here, that there will be no addition of a new non-conformity. The provision that you are reading was relative to the next section down for all other structures or uses, that will be no intensification, okay?
And, and the reason I, I asked you to clarify it, it's actually in your presentation worded the way I, I read it. So, okay, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And I, I don't have any further questions either, having heard the vetting of, you know, essentially all of the questions of the members. So closing that portion of the public hearing, let's move to deliberations. And in deliberating, we, we need to deliberate, of course, around the criteria for both a special permit for non, special permit as well as a special permit for non-conformities, the special permit being under D C O D, the downtown, the downtown demolition control overlay district, sorry. So with that, we'll go back around the, around the, the batting order here to Mr. Delisle. So with that, we'll go back around the, around the, the batting order here to Mr. Delisle.
Oh, I'd already unuttered myself. I'm sorry, everyone. Saying, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you.
First of all, as some of the other members have, have indicated, this looks like a really, you know, thorough and well-thought-out project that, that certainly will resuscitate a house that maybe, you know, if, if the Dodgers hadn't come along, maybe this whole thing would be subject to, to a, a, a hearing like this with respect to the, the DCOD sometime in the future. So I would certainly commend the Dodgers for, for taking on this project and, and doing something that will certainly preserve a piece of what it is that, you know, I think everyone here cares about a lot. So that's great. I think that we need to, to address the DCOD special permit first. So I will say that it, I feel that we've, we've, we've been presented with substantial evidence as to the, the fact that the, the portion of the building to be demolished retains no remaining market value or reasonable use. So I think that that we do have ample evidence in the record, both in the written record and as discussed here this evening, to satisfy that aspect of the DCOD special permit. With respect to the special permit for non-conformities, I don't see that there's a new non-conformity here. And it appears to me that that the proposed changes will not substantially, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. So with that, I can support this project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I concur with Mr. Delisle's very detailed summary. Thank you.
Okay, then Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not crazy about the window, as I've stated, but overall, I think this is, uh, this meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and I can support this application. I think Mr. Delisle filled in a lot of the specifics. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Shannon?
I also agree with Mr. Delisle's summary, and I can support this project. And I, I think it will be a, a great enhancement to, to a building that desperately needs it. So I'm in support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And this is Rob Champetti. I, I agree with my colleagues and especially lean heavily on Mr. Delisle's articulation of the reasons why, the supporting findings and criteria that this board needs to find under the DCOD special permit, as well as the special permit for non-conformities. I agree that it's certainly a, in light of its current state of, you know, of condition. You know, I'm always fond of adaptive reuse of historic structures. And I think the de-intensification of a, you know, and the, the careful attention to, to the architecture in light of the fact that it's, it's not, you know, it's not really easy to create purity. I think to Eileen Graff's point, I really liked that. I'm not, I, I'm, you know, I'm not offended by the notion of a, you know, a, a circular window necessarily. I, I like the, the elements being added to the neighborhood, and I think it's a great project. I have, also, I want to thank, I want to thank Chairman, let me see if, if Mr. Richardson's still here. Chairman Richards of the Newbury Port Conservation, sorry, the Newbury Port Historic Commission, for his time and articulation of the thinking of, of, of the Historic Commission in this. So I too support it. And I think the applicant has done a fine job in putting this together. So do we have any further deliberations from any of the members? Seeing no hands, we will close that portion of the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve the application? And in doing so, we should take the sequence for the first motion out of, we should do it in the following sequence. Doc at 071, the special permit for non-conformity should go first, and then 070 should be taken second. So on 071, special permit for non-conformities, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to, it's Rachel Webb, to approve special permit for non-conformities 2020-71 for 21-23 Walnut Street.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Thank you. Calling the roll, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the special permit for non-conformity 071 is approved. Do we have a motion to approve the special permit, Doc at 2020-070?
Mr. Delisle, I'll make a motion to approve the DCOD special permit, application number 2020-070 for 21 through 23 Walnut Street.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Okay, thank you. Motion is made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The, the motion carries, and the application for special permit is approved. So both applications on 21, 23 Walnut Street have been approved. Thank you all very much for your patience. And Attorney Mead, Eileen Graff, and Chairman Richards, thank you for your comments and your, your patience as well.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your deliberation.
Okay, moving to the last public hearing for this evening. This is the application. It's a two-part application for, by Craig and Susan Lane, 81 Turkey Hill Road. The application is two parts, Doc at 2020-072, a dimensional variance to construct an addition within the required side yard setback. And Doc at 2020-073, a special permit for non-conformities to construct an addition over 500 square feet on a non-conforming lot. May we hear from the applicant? I believe we have Mr. Craig Lane and Ms. Susan Lane. If either of you wish to kick things off, we'll hear from you now.
This is Craig Lane, and our architect Joel Gagnon, I believe, is on with us as well. Or hopefully will be. Basically, what we're looking for here is the special permit and variance to add a breezeway along with a two-car garage with additional living space over. Primarily with, we're looking at last December, due to medical issues, my mother-in-law had to move in with us. She was with us till June. She's now back in her own home. But I have my father who is alone, my wife's mother is alone, and unfortunately, both have health issues. At some point, being that they don't have spouses anymore, would more than likely be ending up with us. So we're kind of trying to do a preemptive plan here to have additional living space to accommodate an additional family member living with us, along with the current three children, who, you know, depending on what happens with them, may or may not be living with us as well. Basically, the current setup, we have a driveway which basically facilitates five cars, which is roughly about five feet from the neighbor's property line. By doing this addition and having the two-car garage, whereas right now we have four cars sitting in our driveway, which soon we'll actually have a fifth licensed driver in the family. It would definitely be a betterment for the neighborhood and especially for our new neighbors, not having to look at the used car lot by having two of those cars in the garage. And also with the new driveway, it actually sets back further away from the, that neighbor's lot line. Thereby, you know, just, you know, adding a little more space where we could also, you know, I have landscaping along the driveway right now, but could definitely even improve it some more with a little more room there. And I don't know if Joel wanted to-
Hello? Hello, we, we can hear you as well, Joel. This is, this is Rob Champetti.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yes, the, the program for this addition was really to, to pick up some extra space. It's a smaller ranch home, very typical for that neighborhood. Also, there's several all around. I believe one of the earlier projects is almost identical to, to this particular property. One of the issues with this site for citing a two-car garage is, actually, it is the topography in the sense that the Turkey Hill is pretty much flat until you just pass the house next door to the left, and then it starts going down. The plane that the existing house is built on was leveled off and raised up a little bit. And then the hill continues down away from the house towards 83 Turkey Hill where it flattens out again. So there's sort of a hill coming from the backyard and the left side, coming down to that corner. And the grade on the driveway is, is pretty steep. So, so looking at the property without building a two-car garage up on the hill with space above it, it was perfect opportunity to just sort of level off the driveway and go under with it. The existing house is raised about four feet off of grade from the first floor. And so we'd be able to keep the first floor of the existing and the addition all leveled should they have to move one of their parents in. And the breezeway is just a, a way of having a transition area for people to enter the house, either through the front yard off of the driveway for guests, or a staircase that is provided at the side of the garage coming up into a small mudroom, which then also opens to the back. We are asking for a relief of seven feet on a required 20-foot side yard setback. Currently now, as you can see on the plot plan, the proposed addition is 13 feet from the side setback. Looking at the, looking at sort of the history of the lot, and I know this probably has no effect with the, with the current owners. The existing house was placed roughly 10 feet from the left side lot line and roughly 20 feet from the, the, the front lot line, and with a frontage of 100 feet, where all of that is currently non-conforming because of zoning changes that, that do occur over time, especially when new developments start to encroach on an area. They want to just get a little more control of the spacing. So looking at, looking at where they placed the house all the way over to the left-hand side, clearly, it was probably being set up. You know, either have the builder do it, or you do it in the future, your own breezeway and garage, which many of these homes have. And clearly, throughout the neighborhood, many people have already added that on. And some of the houses, probably before the zoning change, are, are also encroaching on both side lot lines. So between the topography and sort of the, the existing situation that the house was built in, in order to sort of complete the home, we are seeking the, the side yard setback variance.
Very good. Was there anything further that, Mr. Lane, that you wanted to add? And Joel, I apologize, I didn't catch your last name.
Oh, it's Gagnon, and I'm from Architecture Residential Design.
Very good. Okay, so go ahead.
I did not have anything to add unless you had questions for me.
We, we may. Okay, so Mr. Lane and Mr. Gagnon, thank you both for the presentation. We'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will move to anyone who wishes to speak in support, in, in opposition, or just simply speaking in connection with the application. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment section? And Mr. Gagnon, I see your hand is still raised. I trust that's just an error you didn't wish, unless you, there was anything else you wanted to add?
Oh, I, hello?
Yes.
Yes. I, well, I did, I, I don't know if Craig mentioned this, but I know that the, the abutting neighbor, abutting the addition side is, is supportive of this particular project. And as you can see from the scale of the addition, from the grade of the side yard, it would actually be lower than the, the actual existing ranch home. So it's all sort of kept in the same scale proportion materials, and the attempt was to make it look like it was all built at the same time.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? Seeing no new hands, going once, going twice. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't really have any questions, I guess, but I'll come back on deliberation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I don't have any questions. I just want to mention, I did drive by the, the site today, and it seems like a very logical proposal to put the, the garage under because of the slope of the property. They can take advantage of the topography.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Webb just said what I was gonna say. I mean, I, I drove by today and noticed the, the big slope, which, you know, with the variance, we, it, it's all about the topology or something unusual about the lot. And so I really, I mean, I, I guess my one question is, I just want to double check. When we encroach on a neighbor like this, it's always nice when that neighbor is on board. So it has that, it's the neighbor to the right, as we're looking at this picture right here. They're the ones that have said, yes, we are in support of this project.
I believe they wrote a letter.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Shannon?
I've got no questions, Mr. Chair. In looking at the lot, it makes sense, and there are other homes in the area that have, have done the same thing. You know, they've got the gar, garage to the other side. So I, I've got no other questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Shannon. And this is Rob Champetti. I, I too have no, no further questions that haven't already been discussed. So we will close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. And we'll begin with Mr. Delisle.
So I guess that I am on my own here in saying that I, I think that the, the variance here, I, I also drove by, and I, I don't, I'm not really in agreement with everybody about the, the dramatic nature of the slope here. Yeah, there's a little bit of a slope, but I mean, I think that we get into a dangerous, dangerous territory here with respect to, you know, making a distinction with respect to a lot that's pretty much square, where, you know, you got a little bit of a run, but otherwise, this is a very non-remarkable square lot. And I, I'm just not sure that, for me, that you could satisfy the requirements of the variance.
Very good. Ms., Ms., was there anything further, Mr. Delisle?
Well, yeah, actually, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now that you mention it, I guess I'll, I'll ask Ms. Webb's question from earlier during the evening. Could, and maybe I should have posed this in the question period. But is it possible to, to do something here where you're not in, going into the side setback? And maybe that's where you're gonna tell me that the, the, the dramatic slope is the impediment here. But, you know, if everyone wants to do something in their side setback and says, hey, you know, we need a variance, then we're gonna be in a, in a bit of a pickle with every resident coming to the board and saying, hey, we need a variance to do something within our side setback. Again, I just go back to the, the, the requirements under subsection C that need to be met. And I just think that if the, the lot's a little bit narrow on that side, I just think that if the the lot's a little bit narrow on that side, that's not really a unique circumstance, so that's where I am on this.
Am I, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, this is Joel. We we did look at a different orientation of the garage, and that was to actually have the doors facing the neighbor at 83, so the doors would be to the side. What that would entail, though, in order to keep the frontage and everything else going on, in keeping all of that conforming, is that we would have to essentially excavate that hill out, not only for the entire front up to where the garage faces now, but also all the way along the side with a retaining wall holding up the backyard, and it would still leave us a couple of feet short in terms of being able to back out of a garage. And we just thought that, as far as the neighbor would be concerned, that would be undesirable, because they'd also have to put retaining walls all along the the property line. And I will say one thing about the slope, is that I I agree, when you look at it, it it doesn't seem dramatic at all, and and when I pulled in the driveway the first time, I first thing I did was I reached for my parking brake, and I almost never do that. The the slope is over the 15%, which is what I call ideal on the high side for a driveway slope. Ideally, what we'd like to do is be able to just flatten that driveway out. It'll also help mitigate a lot of the, when snow melts and causes runoff, and then you get a night freeze, because the the owners have said that, you know, they get a lot of ice down sort of towards the end of their driveway, and maybe that doesn't, you know, mean anything, but it certainly, I think, would add some safety to the street as well. But but again, I mean, if anyone, you know, parks in that driveway, it's, it's it's not a normal slope, and and you can feel it when you're when you're in your car on the driveway, but that's all I had to say about that. But we did, we did try a second solution. It it wasn't ideal in terms of its visual characteristics either. I I just think that we were trying to make it look like, you know, this whole house had been built back in 1960, and and the lot is what the lot is. But, you know, it's, it it's a tough one.
Mr. Gagnon, this is Mr. Delisle once again. I I appreciate your your additional insight, and perhaps, you know, as you're driving by, it doesn't look as dramatic, but maybe, you know, that the information that you, when you drove in, you you put on your parking brake, I can, I can, I can, I can understand that, you know, that's not a typical habit of of a person parking in a driveway, so, you know, I can, that adds some some more color to to this for me, so so thank you for that.
All right, very good. And where did we leave off, my apologies, who hasn't?
Mr. Chair, I was the first one to have gone during deliberations, sorry.
Oh, okay, so then let's go to deliberations still, we'll go to Rachel Webb.
Well, I do think that this application meets the requirements of the test for the variance because of the the slope of the lot. In looking at the elevation drawing of the proposed front, you know, it's showing the garage going under with the living space basically on the second, you know, a second floor, a second flight up, excuse me, so that, you know, it's, it may not look like a lot from the street, but I think as, as the applicant described, you know, it really is more of a change in elevation once you're on on the property. So I think that that is, you know, unique to their lot, and, you know, looking at the variance criteria that, you know, strict application of the provisions of the chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use. It was interesting how he explained that, how the house was built on the left side, almost leaving this space for a future garage, and those are, you know, unique conditions and circumstances, they're not the result of actions of the applicant. So I think, you know, the relief will not constitute granting of a special privilege that's inconsistent with limitations on the district, so. And then in terms of the special permit for nonconformities, there's will be no addition of a new nonconformity. So I'm in support of this application.
Very good, Ms. Webb, thank you, and Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, on the variance, I think Mr. Delisle brought up some good points around, you know, we can't just have anybody who wants to get close to the lot line come to us for a variance. I would feel more comfortable if I saw tapos on this plan, so I could really get a sense of the slopes, but having been there this afternoon, I do think it's pretty steep, I understand the need for parking brake, and all things considered, I too can, I too can support this application.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Mr. Shannon.
I I agree with the rest of the board, I think Ms. Webb made a good summary, and I and I can support this for variance, and and that's it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chagden and Shannon, sorry about that, and this is Rob Champetti, again, I I too have nothing further to to add, I I too can, based on the comments and deliberations, can support the application as well. Being as that there, as there are no further deliberations, we'll close that portion of the hearing and go to a motion to approve. Do we have a motion to approve the, we'll begin with the first of the two, a motion to approve the dimensional variance to construct in addition within the required side yard setback, 072.
That's Rachel Webb, I'll make the motion to approve application 2020-072, dimensional variance for 81 Turkey Hill Road.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
All right, motion is made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle.
No.
Ms. Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is four in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application for dimensional variance in 072 is approved. Do we have a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities 073?
I'll make the motion, Rachel Webb, for 073, special permit for nonconformities 81 Turkey Hill Road.
I'll second it, Bud Chagden.
All right, motion is made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Bud Chagden. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagden.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application for a special permit for nonconformities is also approved in docket 073. Both matters being approved on 81 Turkey Hill Road. Thank you very much for your time and patience, both Mr. Lane, as well as, as well as your architect Joel. Thank you very much, members of the board. So we will now circle back to the matter we put a pin in in the, in the business portion of the hearing. Having concluded all concluded all of our public, public hearings this evening, we have under 2B, discussion of public comment emails to board members. I'm not sure who wishes, whom on the board wishes to speak to that.
This is Andy, I can actually speak to that.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, just, we've been, my office has been reaching out to all of the permitting boards, following up on a request from the mayor to see if it'd be possible to basically streamline the process by which the members of the public submit their comments, and the board members receive them. It's probably a access, you know, question, it's probably a technical question, right? What is achievable? So, you know, ball, long story short, we've got varied opinions from different boards about whether they like the the comments to come in packaged and sort of posted to the website, or distributed by Caitlin, you know, prior to the meeting, versus what this, I think the initial suggestion was, which is that members could go to the, or constituents could go to the website, click on an email address, or, you know, send an email to a specific address, say zoningboard@cityofnewburyport, and have those comments go out immediately to, or be forwarded to immediately to all the board members, thereby making it faster for the general public to get their comments to board members, and relieving staff of the the role of, or needed to spend time sort of relaying things in between, which then attracts time from other activities that we need to be responsible for. So, on both of those counts, I agree with, you know, in general in concept, but we wanted to reach out to the boards to find out what the preferences were. We, in the case of the planning board, I think they they sort of, I think, prefer the comments to be packaged, and the the Historic Commission, I got sort of the opposite perspective, I think, when we when we heard feedback from them. So we're just trying to get a sense of what this particular board would prefer, whether it's essentially what we do right now, which is pack, trying to package the comments that we get, and make them accessible to you that way, or if you would prefer, we can essentially set up a distribution list, so that emails from the general public or constituents who want to basically submit comments can have those relayed to you directly, the, you would get them the way that we do, essentially somewhat sporadically, so, and applications coming up for an upcoming hearing, you might get, you know, one email today and another one several days later. Obviously, the goal, people are going to have to submit their comments prior to the board taking action on an application, but it's up to you how you want to receive those, and we're just trying to adapt to both the mayor's request, which was a logical one, and looking at the technical possibilities, but also considering what the board is themselves are comfortable with, and so she asked us to circle back on that.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Does, do any of the members have any comments on that?
I'll say something, it's Rachel Webb. I think my preference is to receive things in a packaged format, and that way, it reduces the risk of missing the sporadic emails that come, you know, three to four days before the meeting, and in different, you know, unpredictable timeframes. It would be nice to know that, you know, a day before, let's say 24 hours before the meeting starts, that that would be the deadline that anyone was, who was submitting any kind of letters of support or additional information would have, and we would know, we could go and click on a link to to read all of that supplemental material. I think that's my preference.
This is Stephen Delisle, I I think I agree with Rachel mostly, I I think I would like to keep it the same, the the way it is with with Caitlin relaying the messages from the general public. I think if, I mean, like some other members of this board, I get more than 100 emails a day, if random people are sending me emails, and I don't know what it's about, they're going to get lost into a black hole, so I I prefer to keep them coming from Caitlin, so that they're, I can, I can receive them and read them and give them the attention that they're due.
I agree. Anyone else have any further comments?
Yeah, I agree too.
Bud Chagden, I agree.
All right. Oh, well, that's very helpful, thank you, those are quick responses, so I appreciate that, it's helpful.
All right, well, that's, I believe that that concludes our festivities for this evening. Do we, having no further business on the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for our hearing this evening, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn, Ken Swanton.
Second, Rachel Webb.
Motion's made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Ms. Webb to adjourn our meeting, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Banovic.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's six in the affirmative. The motion carries, and our meeting is adjourned, thank you all very, very much, and this was a long one, but thank you for your patience, everybody, and thanks, Andy and Caitlin and Gretchen for writing all this down. Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.